Aaron Hallett.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ashley Jones is absent. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, moved.
Is there a second?
So.
All in favor? Motion passes as you need.
Yes.
We're good. All right, we'll move on to annual performance report update.
Okay, this is really truly just an update because we don't have our annual performance report yet. The initial timeline from D E C was that we would have it on Tuesday of this week and then they pushed it back to today. So we thought that we might have it for you this evening to talk about. And now they pushed it back to next Thursday at the earliest. And so they're just taking their time to make sure they get it right. They are doing it differently this year and I want to kind of bring that up tonight just to kind of prep you and whoever might be viewing about what this is going to look like. They have made the determination this year that they are not going to issue an overall score for each district. Instead of combining all of our different standards into one big percentage score, they're just going to report out on each of those individual standards. So we had that same information in prior years, but then they would take it through a scoring matrix and combine it all together and just make a single point total that they would convert to a percentage. So what you'll see once we get our report is that for, say, for example, English Language Arts, there's going to be three different measures. You know, one is how high do you score? One is are you improving as a district as a whole? And one is are individual students showing growth over time? So you could look really good on one and potentially have earned all the points and the other two may not look as good. For example, if your scores are really high, the likelihood of you showing the growth or improvement are not as good and vice versa. So it will be a little bit confusing and I'm not quite frankly sure how it's going to be explainable to the general public. But we will certainly share that information with you. Since they're not issuing a score, an individual overall score for each district, kind of the tendency might be to try to figure it out yourself, which you can do. You can get a close approximation based on how they've scored things in the past. And at this point, they don't have the science results yet because it was a new test last spring and they're still going through that process of scoring them and setting cut scores and things for the first time. So it may be another month before we have science scores, so.
Or longer.
Or longer. So anyhow, it, we won't have the complete picture for a little while yet. Overall, the information that we can see already tells us that we did pretty well again as a district. And we'll have to decide later if we think we have enough information to approximate a score or not. But if we did, we would be in the, we'd be strongly in the 90s like we are every year. But it's hard to really gauge that information right now based on what information we have. So I'm just kind of giving you the heads up that we probably won't go out and be able to say we got a 98.5% again this year because they weren't going to give us an individual score or total score. So in some ways that's good because it'll focus the, the attention on individual elements, the individual standards. So at some point, we'll bring more information back to you about how things went on that. I doubt we'll do that next Thursday night at the board meeting because it may come out that day and it may not even be available yet then. So at some future date, we'll bring that back to you and share more info. The unfortunate side of not having that single score, it's harder to communicate to the general public. So we got a lot of good news and some of that you're going to hear tonight in the student achievement reports. And so that's what we really ought to focus on anyway. That complex scoring mechanism that the state does probably isn't as informative but looking at some of these individual results. So any questions about that general topic before we move on? I just kind of wanted to give you an update.
Okay. We'll move on to student achievement. Dr. Volker.
Well, good evening. I think it's important to note in, as Dr. Monsis' conversation, I think as a district, why we use a scorecard and why we use multiple measures. Because you will see measures such as that APR score. The state decides to change that and ebb and flow with those. But we have a broad base, very deep look at our district through our scorecard and I think that's one of the advantage. And I know you as a board appreciate that type of deep look. So I think that's something we'll continue to examine as we go. How does that impact our scorecard and when we need to make changes with it? So looking at, I want to start this with a thank you to our teachers. This is our yearly update regarding our academic achievement. And we have hundreds of staff members out there that work tirelessly so we can show positive gains and results and so our kids can learn. I think it's important that we start there. And then we acknowledge the hard work of the students and the parents. If you're not having that triumvirate, that stool of student, parent, teacher, then we're falling down in some areas. So we're always going to work to make sure we include all of those components into achievement. And when we see great results or we see growth, then we need to thank all three of those groups. So that's kind of where I want to start. Looking at it, what you're seeing first, and we're going to have Dr. Barr and Dr. Hoffman go through different areas of academic achievement. But what we're looking at first is our Missouri Assessment Program, our MAP results. And as a district, these are overall district results. And the first one is math. If the number that you're looking at is actually called the MPI, the MAP Performance Index. And it figures based if a student scores an advanced, that's five points, proficient's four, basic is three, and below basic is one. So essentially, if 100% of your students scored advanced, your score, a perfect score would be 500. For example, 100% of your students scored and that proficient, your score would be 400. So this score shows you that range within it. Also important to note, we only have two years of results there because we have two years of a common assessment, of a similar assessment that we actually can compare. It would not be appropriate to go back years prior and compare MPI scores to a test that was not similar. So looking at that, and of course, this will grow over time. Hopefully, we'll have some solidity, how would I want to say? Consistency with our assessment practice. Consistency is a much better word choice there. And we'll be able to look at scores over time. So looking at the state results in math, that's 307.9. And the state actually dropped slightly, just a tenth there to 307.8. But if you look at our 2018 at 317.8 and our 2019, you'll see some pretty significant growth to 333.5. Now, I will not say that's where we want to be. We've set a lot of targeted building specific and student specific growth goals this year to continue to move that math score. But moving your MPI across the entire district, that many MPI points is some pretty significant change in growth. So I just want to acknowledge all the work that our teachers have done with that, our students and our parents, and the things that we've come to you with and over time continuing to implement. We certainly won't stop there. But that is, that's solid growth. So looking at the next one, that's English Language Arts. English Language Arts, you'll see the state scores 339.5, 338.3, so it dropped as well. And we made growth, but not near the significant growth we did in math. But we did go up over a full point in English Language Arts as well. And in talking with our staff, our principals and teachers, really what we're looking is that steady march and improvement. So if we're three to five to six to seven MPI points a year, that's where we want to be. Probably not one or two. Definitely in math, I, I don't expect to see a 15 to 17 point growth that change every year either. But that three to five, as we continue kind of that steady march towards higher MPI scores. So if you look down, the next category is super subgroup. So super subgroup includes our students who have IEPs, our free and reduced lunch population, Hispanic students, African-American students, those minority groups. Those are all included in the super subgroup totals. So if you look at our state, it went down by that tenth. And if you look in math, we made some pretty significant growth. Not quite as much growth as our whole group population, which of course they're included in, but made significant growth. When you scroll down below, and guys, feel free to stop me at any point in time. So I don't have any pauses in this. Stop me if you have a question. You know me well, just stop me if you have a question. English Language Arts results for our super subgroup, these are the ones that I think we, the reason why we didn't see the three to five to seven point MPI growth that we wanted to see in our whole group. I have some theories and we've been talking to our principals and we have some theories. There was a lot of focus on math intervention. As you and we've all talked about math a lot last year, based on our MPI. There was a lot of focus on math intervention. There was a lot of, just that data-driven approach with math. And I do believe sometimes that you get that tendency to maybe not focus as much on the other content area when you're doing that. Or you become a little more, let's just call it maybe less reflective on some of those. Not change your practice, but maybe a little less reflective on some of those things. So I think that's something we're going to have to go back and correct.
Do you have enough data yet to figure out exactly which subgroups?
Yes.
Dropped?
Yes. And I, we have, our IEP subgroup obviously tends to historically struggle. Our minority population, African-American population struggle as well across. Actually, probably, if, I don't want to misquote it, but I believe it was more so in math. But we're going to, even though the super, super subgroup showed growth, I think it was in math, that we really do need to look at our specific subgroups. I think we actually saw growth in that, our minority population in ELA. I think it was the IEP population, but I'll have to go back and make sure. Yes, I've printed, we have all of those to look at. And it's something that we, we don't treat as much in subgroup populations, but we, we are absolutely about the individual student results. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me with the amount of data that we have and the ability for us to tailor instruction based on the data that we have, not to look at individual students to drive achievement. Because that's what I as a parent care about. And when you focus on that, I know you guys as parents care about your own children's achievement. When you focus on every child's achievement in that capacity, you can see growth across the whole by doing that. And in the long term, that's better for kids. So that's the way we approach it and I don't, I don't see that changing. It doesn't mean we won't work on some other things, you know, work with our staff, talk about cultural competency, talk about things that I think could drive achievement because we will. So if we scroll down a little bit farther, you're going to see math results by MAP Performance Index from 2018 to 19. And we can compare those two assessments because they were common and then the growth and change. So I went with school colors, a little more black and gold on there. If they are colored on the right-hand column, then they grew in 2019 as a building overall on those MPI scores. So we just had one instance that did not, that, that does happen. You'll have varying factors throughout the year that might impact that. And I know Dr. Discol's already working hard on that.
And keep in mind too, they aren't exactly the same kids.
Right.
Because one grade level progressed to middle school.
Fifth grade left.
And another one moved into third grade.
And this is only three, four, and five in the elementaries. I mean, you don't, we don't map test our kindergarten, first and second graders. So three, four, and five, so you know, a third of the kids we're talking about have moved on relative to that. So it's not all in that capacity. So you have to be careful, it's not totally apples to apples. But looking in there, that is, that's pretty solid growth. The algebra, see the algebra's included in the high school score, which we saw some really solid growth. So that was really positive. A lot of it's, you know, we're going to talk about some student motivation factors a little bit when we get to IB and AP scores. Definitely AP, we're going to talk a little bit about student motivation. Remember the student motivation conversation we had about Algebra II? Last year, I'll remind you if you weren't here. We told the students that our Algebra II EOC was not counted in their grade. And it wasn't a part of the process for their learning continuum. Let's just call it like that.
Because it was a new test.
It was a new test.
And we knew we weren't going to have the results back.
We weren't going to have the results. It's not that we did anything wrong structurally, we weren't going to have the results back in time. Well, we knew to tell a 16-year-old that. Sometimes, sometimes. So I saw lots of results that kids were really probably should be achieving at a much higher level. Kind of seeing some similar things maybe with some AP scores regarding to the reasons why some of our kids, not totally, and Dr. Barr's going to talk about that, we have some definite things we need to work on. But there is some of that. So we'll talk about that a little bit. Math MPI, you look by building, you see pretty significant growth in, in two ways, just as the numbers and in the chart below. And if you look at ELA, you'll see some dips in some reasons that our overall MPI only grew by one. So if we scroll down to the ELA portion, you'll see some elementary pretty, pretty solid growth or at least growth. And then our middle schools, while they grew significantly in math, did about the exact opposite in English Language Arts. It was really, we spent a lot of time on math intervention and math focus and core resource math and what we're going to do with math. And I think we have to strike that balance with our middle school staff and students and instruction. You can't just flip the switch, you've got to. And I, they know that. And the plans that they have developed for this year, I feel confident, are going to level this again. And if they don't, we'll go back. But we're looking at our NWA results, that's why we do that. So we don't have to wait an entire year for MAP results. Because it's really, really autopsy-like if that's what you do. So we can dig in deep and the NWA, we're going to use that to drive those. So just scrolling down, I think that is the end of my portion. Do you, guys have, these are big district-wide MAP results. Do you guys have any questions about this before I turn it over to look at NWA scores? And we'll talk a lot more about IB and AP and all of those. Some assessments you didn't see, let me tell you why you didn't see. Science, as Dr. Monsis explained, we don't have results back, that would be impossible for us to show you. And then social studies was a field test. So normally, there's more information up there regarding the MAP, but social studies was a field test and we don't have science back. So can't show you those yet. Okay, any questions?
I think overall, the MAP, the math results were something to celebrate. Obviously, we've had some focus there and it's been a couple of years in the making with some, you know, curriculum changes, resource adoption, phasing in the professional development that goes with that resource adoption. We've added some resources in terms of staffing, in terms of instructional coach that you authorize, as well as another resource at the middle school, another resource position, I believe. So you've been making the right investments and I think we'll continue to work towards it to use those effectively, hopefully.
Absolutely.
We got these test scores back a lot faster this year than the last year.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I think we got them in February.
Is MAP trying to stay relevant or?
Yeah.
Well, so ELA and math were first time, first year, just like sciences this year. And then there was a complication in the process for setting the cut scores that's.
Very complex.
Complex and dynamic. So anyhow, it's good news that we'll have hopefully science sooner rather than later and we've got this much more timely this year.
Yeah. We're going to turn it over to Dr. Hoffman to talk about NWA results. I think you'll see kind of a continuing trend of some pretty positive results when you look at where our students fell. And this is the most recent assessment, we're talking about the one that was just completed in the fall. So I, I hope this is just the precursor and showing the work that our teachers and students are putting in and kind of trending in that very positive direction.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. I want to start with a thank you. It was just a few short years ago that our teaching staff provided feedback that they really needed more frequent access to better data that, in their hands to confirm and plan for their kids in their classrooms. MAP just was not cutting it and we've talked about that, I know. It's more of that autopsy Dr. Volker referred to and it's been a constantly moving target as well. So you as a board and those serving at the time, we're incredibly supportive in answering that call and getting that information by approving NWA and putting it in the hands of our teachers. So thank you very much for that support. So we're going to start with this first look using NWA. And it's going to examine district-wide grade level cohort growth over the past one year. So it, we know that as educators, there's no such thing as a typical student, right? Kids are very different. But if we look at that 50th percentile kind of as a, as a benchmark, that we can get an idea of nationally among hundreds of thousands of students that take this assessment, what might be considered kind of that typical performance for any grade level? So you're going to see numbers here that are percentiles in the table and on the chart. You will see how students performed one year ago, so that fall of 2018, and then how they, as Dr. Volker mentioned, just performed in the most recent assessment that we completed last month. So for example, if you look at the first grade row, those would be current first graders, how they came into kindergarten performing and then how they most recently demonstrated their achievement on NWA.
So that's the same group of students.
Yes. So apples to apples, it's, it's great. We have so many different, so much access to different reports to show various things that help us to drive that instructional decision-making in our classrooms and in our schools. So this is cohort information. What you'll notice is a lot of very positive growth. If you just look at the slope of the lines in the graph alone. But if you look on down, so in first grade, for example, students who when they came in first, into kindergarten were at the 58th percentile, so already came in fairly strong. But wow, look at that growth to that 90th percentile. That's really hard to pull off. Not always, can I say we're always going to replicate that? But that is super exciting and should, we should definitely celebrate the work that our teachers put in to that level of growth that our students demonstrated here. And that's true across the board. Even scores in the 70th percentiles, all of that is very strong and demonstrates really healthy and positive growth. We do have a couple of levels that I want to call your attention to. So for example, in sixth grade, we noticed those students from fifth to sixth grade, remember that's, that's that cohort that transitions from, into middle school. There was a slight dip there. We do know that sometimes students, as they make that transition into the middle school after six years in elementary, we do sometimes see whether it's socially or in this case academically, just a little bit of that dip. Testimony to our leaders and our fifth and sixth grade teachers, they spent some very dedicated time last spring and again continue to this fall, discussing what can we do to ease that transition process for our students in general? So we'll continue to have those discussions. The other thing I wanted to point out is on that third grade row, that 37 is definitely a blip. But there's, I want to explain a little bit about the change of tests. So that, in that first column there, that 37 reflects how they entered second grade. And so the difference in NWA between the kindergarten and first grade test versus the second grade through 12th grade test is in its makeup. So that kindergarten and first grade year, students take an assessment that really examines how are they doing on some very basic, very foundational skills that we definitely need them to have. But then when they switch to second grade, that test is far more comprehensive and more application in nature. They read it all themselves, they apply that to computation, problem solving, those types of things. So in mathematics, when you see that 37, we definitely notice trend-wise that that first time they take that version of the assessment, it throws them for a bit of a loop.
A little bit of a shock to the system.
We continue to talk about how can we minimize that and actually did a couple of things differently we're trying this past fall. So we'll see how that pays off. But in general, we do tend to see that very first time kids experience that more comprehensive test, they do tend to come in a little lower. They usually recover very nicely by winter.
I was going to say, you'll see that even the winter results, they just need exposure to that level of material.
That's right. So do you have any questions so far about math? And if not.
Just looking, and I know there are cohorts and going straight down the line. May or may not be a logical question. But it basically increases as the grades go up with the exception of like around sixth and seventh grade or seventh and eighth, depending on which column you're looking at. Does something happen there?
So the high school assessment is a bit of a different one as well. And so how it's reported is more by grade level, but we know students are, in that grade level are taking multiple different courses that are focusing on multiple different facets of mathematics.
Was your question about the middle level, though?
Well, like in sixth, so in fourth grade, it's a 60, okay. First grade, it's a 58. Then it goes to the 60s in fourth and fifth. Then 60 in sixth, but then in seventh and eighth, it dropped back to 57 instead of continuing to be a bump higher.
Yes.
And then in ninth, it's 78 and intense, so it keeps going up except seventh and eighths drop down and then it goes back up.
You know, it's interesting as a middle school principal, and that's coming to this role from, from that in multiple districts, that is fairly common. It is one of those why I work really hard on kind of the social emotional side of things and why our district has mental health task force and where we're trying to be responsive to student needs. Because that is probably one of the most difficult time periods for students in all of those transitions. So to see kind of an academic plateau sometimes in sixth and seventh is, is fairly common. Now, if we can solve that, because we grow our kids pretty remarkably in this district. Our, our kids grow and they continue to grow and our achievement over time is pretty solid. If we can solve that kind of plateau, one will probably all write books. But we will have, I think, incorporated social emotional learning, we'll incorporate all the things that we're trying on mental health task force. And correct me if you, if you think something else as the Director of Secondary Education, but it, it's one of those things that it, it's a difficult time in those young people's lives and we're going to have to address the whole child if we want to see consistent growth at the middle level.
I know parents reached out last year about the math in, in sixth grade. And I mean, we see it here, how it's dipped down. And we kind of, we say it's because that's the transition period, they're going to a new school, it's new, new everything. I, I know I looked ahead to the reading, why didn't it dip in reading too if it dips in math?
Yeah. I mean. That's a great question.
I didn't know if it was more the teaching or the curriculum or the.
Do you want to go ahead? Because I think it's a little of all of that, if you want to know the truth.
I think some of it has to do with the curriculum and the standards, in all honesty. Because English is a very spiral curriculum. We learn metaphors in this grade and this grade and this grade. So it really much spirals, but in math, there's some pretty big jumps in the concepts that they're, I'm expected to understand. And there's a lot more conceptual math that's now needed in the middle school that maybe before in elementary, it was much more concrete math. And so I think making that jump is, is a little harder for kids, especially since developmentally, where they are in sixth through eighth grade can be all over the place. You know, you can get some kids who totally are not getting it in sixth grade and then in seventh grade, it's just, my prefrontal cortex has developed and here I am. So, but I do think a lot of it is the, the difference in the, the standard expectations and the move to conceptually understanding math.
And I really do think we are addressing it also on all sides with the transitional supports that Dr. Hoffman was talking about, as well as our focus with our instructional coach this year and the curricular and standard and teaching aspect at the sixth grade now. So that's why we came to you and said, we need additional support to provide teachers additional professional development.
If it continued to drop off in seventh, I mean, then we know there's a problem.
Right.
I mean, with it rebounding and coming back up in seventh and eighth, you know, it looks like something, you know, it's being taken care of, but it's just that dip.
We agree, yeah.
And when you have parents, you know, concerned and, and reaching out saying, hey, you know, kids aren't understanding this.
Yeah. And we are working specifically on that.
What do you think happened in 11th grade then?
Oh.
Which is really 10th, the first number is 10.
Well, 10th graders in their fall of 11th grade. So like Dr. Hoffman was saying, it's by grade level, but the way they're really tested is by course.
Yeah, geometry, algebra two.
So in that 11th grade number, you will have kids who are perhaps retaking, had to retake Algebra I, who are back in geometry and algebra. You really have the full expanse in 11th grade, not so much at ninth grade. In ninth grade, you've got kids in Algebra I or geometry. And so there's just a bigger mix in 11th grade.
Is there a reason kindergarten isn't?
Yes, because a year ago, they were in.
Pre-K.
Not in school.
No, but I mean the, the current one.
Well, we could have get a, a current kindergarten class score. Like we couldn't have shown, we couldn't have shown growth, obviously.
I mean, because obviously, so 58 would have been last year's first score.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
We could have listed, absolutely, we could look that up.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if there was a reason or.
No, no, there wasn't a reason. We, that's a good point. We absolutely could have put, our kindergartners currently this fall scored this.
Yes.
And I guess my other question is, is there a reason we went fall to fall and not end of last year to the fall of this year?
We could have run that as well.
Yes.
We just thought it was kind of exciting to say this time last year, here's where they were and this time this year, here's how they are, so.
And you can, you can run it fall to spring too.
And our teachers and our building principals do, they, they have access.
They run it all sorts of different ways.
Whatever helps them make sense of information so they can plan for their students.
Really, their most important thing is fall to winter will be the next one. So, I mean, they appreciate this, but great, this is what they did last year. They're, they want to know their scores now and then they want to know how their efforts have gone in this fall semester.
Right, because there's also, you know, the whole regression over summer, whatever, you know. And so, you know, I would, I was just kind of interested to see.
And we usually look at that, I will look at that. I won't have it for our summer school report next Thursday because we tested, our NWA window didn't close in time for our tech department to actually run that statistic. But I will get, we will show you our regression or lack thereof of those students that attended summer school and those did not.
All right, so we.
And so, oh, I'm sorry, so just to make sure I have. And so, oh, I'm sorry, so just to make sure I have the timeframes right. So, the 11th grade, 66, that's what they scored in 10th grade in the fall.
Correct. All right, if you can scroll on up just to take a peek at reading, very similar results. Their starting point as a cohort at each grade level actually was a little higher, which we predicted. We know we really took a focus last year on, on math and what we could do to improve those results to, to similarly see that same starting achievement perhaps in the future. So, again, functions the same way in first grade. A year ago, as kindergartners, they came in at that 61st percentile. And then, again, exciting growth across the board. All of those cells that are filled or colored in demonstrate growth over the course of one year for that cohort of students. And again, that graph represents that same information that's in the chart. So, overall, very positive growth from our students and hard work on the part of our teachers and partnering with our parents. If we want to flip to the next report. Okay, so this is, um, growth by school. And again, we start with math. So, how this report works is, it's called a quadrant report, so four quadrants. Anything above the line demonstrate, sorry, anything on that left-hand axis demonstrates growth. So, anything above that middle horizontal line would be growth that's surpassing what would be considered typical performance. And then that bottom axis demonstrates achievement. And so, anything to the right of the vertical line demonstrates that we are surpassing what would be considered typical achievement. So, the sweet spot would be if you're in both. So, that's that upper right-hand quadrant. But anything to the right and anything above that middle line are very positive on one way or another. And many of our buildings fell in that sweet spot, so to speak, where they are both achieving highly and their growth rate is in a very positive way surpassing what would be expected.
Speaking as the social studies teacher, the farther northeast you go, the better. So, for all you math people, the farther social studies folks, northeast, we want to travel northeast with our buildings.
Northeast. And then this is, if you scroll on up to reading or down to reading. Similarly, the report is set up the same way graphically. And again, most of our buildings cluster in that both high achievement and high growth rate quadrant. So, lots to celebrate across the board. And in that last report, you got to see some of the information about different grade levels that might contribute to one building's either higher growth rate or achievement.
And some of the dots are close enough together that not all the names show up there, but you see the general pattern overall.
It's really important to note on this that these are great big picture documents, but our teachers take it to a much more individual student classroom basis. They, they are looking at this and our principals are looking with them and saying, okay, how is this particular child or how are we doing across this content in this classroom and what can we do? I really think it's important that we continue to try and shape that conversation with our teachers, because sometimes it can be very stressful to look at your year's worth of work. I mean, this is their profession, they take it very seriously. To shape this with our teachers, that this is just about continued improvement and growth in your craft. So, when we're talking and having that conversation with staff, we're saying, how can we help you continue to grow students and their achievement? But they take it down to the student level and you guys are getting a very global view of our results.
And so, Al, we're, we've seen a couple of, I don't know if trends is the right word, observations here this evening. Where at specific ages, students tend to have difficulties. And I forget, it was sixth and seventh and maybe it's ninth and 10th. And as parents, we're actually told that in, you know, back to school nights, right? You know, when kids hit high school, they are going to have difficulty or et cetera, because it's a new environment. Do you think it would be worthwhile to try to focus on some of those known times when we know that they're going to have issues? And dig into that a little more deeply in terms of what support can we provide to students when everybody knows this is going to be the semester that's going to be rough or, or things like that?
I think the honest answer is yes. And I think we have goals in our strategic plan and we have goals that we have set amongst our department about those transitions, about those times, but I honestly believe we can do more. I think that we can be more targeted, I think we can be more specific with it. And it would serve our students and support our staff to set those goals and those actions to do it. Yes, to answer your question, I think it's just what do we do and how do we do it and how do we make it sense for the staff?
Did we add some support staff to like the sixth grade math last year? I thought we did.
We have, we've added core resource teachers, we've added different interventionists, we've added those things. It's almost now to, how do we target down, are there specific time periods? Are there specific contents? Are there specific communication tools that we could reach out to our parents with that could help them in these transition periods? Because I think sometimes that's a core component that we are not reaching out to at the level that I think we could. Because I can tell you what, we try, but it is a large and complex task. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't continually say, what can we do to better target that? So, I think, yeah, that's where we are. We have good results, they can be better. But we're going to have to do things like that to get there.
I know we added an instructional coach in math, thank you, because math is not, you know, something I should be coaching. And that has been going very well. And he is really working specifically with teams of teachers on how can we do some more differentiation in the classroom in order to help those kids who may be a little more behind, but stretch the ones who are ahead. He's specifically working on that heavily at sixth grade, also at ninth grade, which are some of those transition times. He's also already gone in and done some team teaching. He did some earlier this week with a, a new teacher, a young one, who was like, oh, proofs are hard to teach, can you maybe model for me? So, I, so he's been an incredible resource so far as far as helping our teachers, particularly when they're coming in right out of college. I mean, they're doing the best they can, but you know, they're new. And so, he's been able to already kind of invest that time as a veteran math teacher who had good results. And be, that will definitely help us in, in the long run with either whether it be specific topics or specific grade levels or just how to, how to do some more differentiation than maybe what we've been doing at the secondary level. It's a little challenging when you have 37th graders to try to differentiate, but with that kind of support, I think we're going to make some real movement.
I think it will help us with consistency as well. When he's able to be in all those classrooms and have those conversations, that consistency for us as leaders and as for our board and for our parents, that they know whichever math teacher they have, they're going to get this high quality education and those teachers are going to be collaborating. That instructional coach was very beneficial and we appreciate your support to do that.
All right.
I think we're ready for Dr. Barr.
Okay, so our next one is international back laureate. So, we are still pretty young in the, in the IB game relatively speaking. And I believe this is our third year of, of test results. But the overall, kind of what you're seeing is test results by subject area. We did have more kids this year write tests than we did in the previous year. So, this year, we had 220 submissions, last year, we had 140. So, while our diploma numbers, as far as kids who are going for the full diploma is fairly steady, we had 12 last year, 13 this year. The amount of kids who are accessing certain classes is definitely increasing, which is, is good, because that means that we're offering something to a broader scope, scope of students. We also do continue to add courses. It seems like we add something every year. Sometimes we add things and they don't make, the interest isn't there, but sometimes they add things and, and we're willing to invest. So, for instance, film was a new addition this year. So, that's why, yes, it seems like a, a pretty low number. It was Ms. Penichar's first, first shot at that. So, we know over time, the more that our teachers are teaching the kids, going to workshops, getting back their test results, the more they're able to refine and kind of continue to increase, increase our scores and increase the ability to understand what the expectations are for the students.
Can I interrupt real quick? What is the scoring guide? What does, I mean, does the numbers mean something?
Seven, seven is the ultimate, so seven is high and one is low. Internationally, there were no sevens last year. So, I feel internationally, there were no sevens.
So, when they go to apply to a college, do they need to have a certain score in order for it to transfer as credit?
Yes, and that depends on university, the university or college. So, we do have a master grid that Mr. Meek and I worked on to kind of show, here's the college and here's the score. And if you get this score, here's how many credit hours you're usually given.
For both AP and IB. I think it'd be a really, now, I think we need to get that out there, but I, it does change. I mean, universities will make changes and then immediately your document is shared with parents. And parents don't always understand that, that can be very frustrating for them. But I, it is good information.
I will say also, we are noticing that more schools are offering more credit for IB than, than a couple of years ago when we first started this.
So, do they need like a four and above generally for it to transfer?
In general, yes. The four is kind of like the AP three, it can go either way.
Three to five or above.
And so, there are some who are on fours.
There are quite a few that a four would be applicable, same with the AP three.
But the five, six or seven is, is pretty solid, you know, that they're going to offer something.
And you can see the areas where we have traditionally done well and the areas that we are going to definitely need to continue to determine what level of instruction and how can we get scores.
Yeah, I was going to ask what happened with chemistry there.
Yes, chemistry, chemistry internationally does pretty well, but in the United States does not. Pretty, that's pretty common, so we are not unusual in, in that respect. He also had several more kids taking it, which also, of course, affects things. We are actually meeting tomorrow as an IB team to discuss, is chemistry something we still want to, want to keep? Many schools have moved to offering biology, which we offer, and environmental systems and society, which has actually been in our course guide for many years, it just has never made. But it's kind of like math studies is for the, the non-math person who wants the diploma. I'm not going into a math field, whereas mathematics is for the math. Chemistry is really for the heavy science person, but environmental systems and societies is maybe for the non-science person. So, somebody like me would have taken that if I were going into an IB. So, we're talking about perhaps making that change in order to better serve our kids so that that one course isn't the reason why a student doesn't make a diploma.
So, if the mathematics of somebody who's going into math, should we be concerned that we had so many in the twos and threes?
So, mathematics is the one, it's more of a math, math focus. And so, I do know they're still working on that. Now, ironically enough, the math is changing. It started this year, that IB also does that every, I think, seven years where we're doing a change. And so, those two tests will actually be very different next year when the, the people in the two-year sequence go forth. So, we've implemented the first math course this year. They'll implement the second new math course next year, we had to have new resources. And so, they are learning all over again, the math changes were pretty significant. So, we will probably need to give them another year or two to continue to go to training, continue to do their resource and, and see how they, they adjust.
Do we typically have one, do we typically have one teacher per subject in IB?
Typically, math, we, we have a couple, but typically it's one per, per course.
Do we have more than one in English? Or is it just one?
Just one.
Okay.
They have to go to extensive training outside of the school year to get prep for that. And let's, you know, let's be real, these are extremely challenging courses and exams. So, by design, they are extremely rigorous. So, overall, overall, very positive, but obviously, we've got plenty of room to grow as well.
And we will also, next year is our review year for IB, where they send in a team and see how we're doing. So, I'm sure we'll get some additional feedback. I, I know we will get additional feedback from that process. So, this year, the IB team is putting together the report, it's a pretty extensive report. It's almost as extensive as the original visit that you have to get to be declared. So, they are working on this all year, which is a really good reflection process for them. And so, I am sure we will receive feedback next fall when the team comes and visits.
In order to get the IB degree, what score do they have to get on the individual tests?
I believe you have to get a five or above, I will double check that.
I was just curious.
There was one other document that I'm not going to spend a ton of time on, but it was in there just for your reference. And it was the comparison to the worldwide scores. This is a, a report that I believe is new, which is definitely new to, new to us. And so, it kind of lets us see how do we compare to everybody who takes it in the entire world. And so, for instance, when I said, you know, we don't, we don't have any sevens internationally, that's how I know that, because that highest grade is linked to the worldwide. So, we didn't get any sevens, but no did any, no, nor did anybody else. So, but it kind of gives us a frame of reference on kind of how we're performing in comparison. So, we will receive that every year to continue to, to measure that.
So, you're looking at average grade school is us, average grade worldwide is everybody. And we have several areas where we're above the norm. And then we have somewhere below, so it's kind of a, a mix. About half and half.
Any questions?
We'll have to color code that in the future, begging of the color coding.
Any additional questions about IB? Okay. I believe AP is the next set of letters we'll be looking at tonight. So, our AP program, one through five scoring, five being high, one being low. Three is again, that middle number where a university or college can go one way or the other as far as if they're going to offer credit. Fours and fives are pretty guaranteed credit. These results are obviously still ones that we need to work on. We're definitely not satisfied with the results that we have. And so, in doing some analysis last year and then into this year, we did change the requirement to get weighted credit for AP courses and that they, that a student has to sit for the exam. There are some unintended consequences that come, come with that. And that is that we have a, a group of kids who take the tests who probably shouldn't. So, they are making a, you know, low Cs or Ds in the class, but they, they went ahead and even though the teacher said, I don't recommend you take the test, they take it because then they get the weighted credit and that mitigates some of, some of the low grades. So, we do know that's a factor. We do know that the motivation sometimes is, is a factor, that sometimes they're not fully completing the exam. We do also know however, that we probably, we definitely know that we need to readjust our focus in AP. So, IB, you have trainings because they're mandated, so we wouldn't have a choice. AP is a little looser, they don't mandate trainings. And so, we definitely, Stephen Miller and I have talked about renewing that focus on PD in, for AP and actually doing our own rotation of teachers, saying we are going to AP professional development. Also, working with our teachers to submit their names to participate in the AP grading. So, everything that I've ever known is that the best PD for AP is to go to the grading, where you actually get to participate and actually get to see what people are looking for. We've had our world history teacher do that and has definitely said it's, it's come back and it's made a real difference in how he's approaching things. We've had one English teacher who just did it this past summer, definitely also came back saying, that has changed my perspective and how I'm going to assess. And so, we're going to work with all of our teachers to see how fast we can get them on grading teams as well. It's a selection process, they do have to have taught AP for at least three years, but that is going to be something we're committed to. We are also having our AP teachers now collaborate during late start. IB has been doing that. And so, we're going to have AP, they are beginning to do that as well. So, we can kind of look at what are some things that we can share resource wise? What are some strategies we can use all around that we're going to help all of our kids? AP also now has a new resource called the AP Classroom. And so, that is a student resource that students can join the AP Classroom and teachers can actually grab from the AP Classroom, sample activities, sample assessment questions that AP has officially said, these are, these are good to go. Previous to AP Classroom, basically, all an AP teacher had was released items. Released items are released for a reason, they're either old and, and not that great anymore, or they were never that great in the first place. So, while it's some practice, it's not as good as what we anticipate we're going to see in AP Classroom.
When did AP Classroom, when was that, like a month ago, a year ago?
Yeah, it's brand new.
It's brand new.
Yeah. The teachers were just talking on the last professional development day when I went over to the high school, because it's a new resource to them. They were very excited about it, because as Dr. Barr was saying, they're not used to having that level of resource. But with that and with our efforts to get them out and seeing the tests and scoring the tests and then collaborating in the same way that maybe our IB teachers have been doing. And I think the high school teachers that we're talking to that teach AP courses were encouraged by that as well.
AP's also released course and exam descriptors, or they call them CEDs, those are brand new. So, there really hasn't been any specific course or exam descriptors to guide teachers. And so, they have offered that as a new resource as well. There's a lot of new resources coming out of AP now that are giving a lot more clarity to what the assessments are going to be. And then in addition, some of us are going to take a, a field trip to a local high school where they are really making some gains on their AP scores and their principal is actually a trainer for AP. So, he has offered for us to come up and meet with them. He helped work on the team that created the CEDs and, and the AP Classroom. And so, he has opened his doors for us to come in and learn from him. So, it's a local resource that we'll be able to access on a. So it's a local resource that we'll be able to access on a on a regular basis. So the scores are most certainly not anywhere near where we want them to be, but um, I feel like we have a a better game plan now.
What is the benefit of having AP versus dual credit?
I would, I always liken dual credit to more than likely guaranteed credit. Cause if you pass, you're gonna get the credit. AP um, and IB, I would call risky credit, because you have, you can take the course, but unless you get a certain grade on the exam at the end, you may or may not get credit. So dual credit's a little more solid um, for some people.
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the cost of the test?
Oh.
I believe it's a little over a hundred dollars.
Yes, I'll check.
Right around a hundred.
Yeah.
So, trying to phrase this right way so I get, I'm seeing everything when I'm asking. Why does it benefit us to have AP classes versus getting rid of AP and having more dual credit?
Well, right now, I I don't know that I can tell you that. A year or two ago, I could have had a better answer. Because in the past, dual credit, just because I took dual credit from UMKC, doesn't mean MU would take it. In fact, that was an actual fact, which was crazy, because they're in the same system. So dual credit was a lot more iffy as far as who would really accept it.
Transferability.
Since now.
Or accepted for credit in your degree program, or for, they would take it as just elective credit and not for any course requirements.
Whereas AP was a little more widely accepted. Um, um, almost every university and college has some kind of acceptance of AP. And so now, however, we're in a slightly new era, one year old, under what's called the Core forty-two uh, in Missouri, where there are um, those those courses that all universities have said, if you take it here, it's good everywhere. So, but then again, that is only in Missouri.
Right.
So we still have that risky transferability for dual credit when we're looking at kids who are going out of state. So AP or IB would be probably a little safer, because again, those are typically more accepted.
It's.
But only if you have the score.
Correct, if you have the score.
Right, so four and five is passing. You said three, it depends on what school or.
More often than not.
When I look across, I'm looking at the chart right now, the vast majority of them will take a three across many. And so I'm looking at even.
Four, four or five, just looking at the results, number of exams and fours and fives that were scored, you had an eighty-seven percent failure rate.
I think it'd be important to look at threes as well, to be truthful.
If you, okay, so we add three fours and fives.
Right.
You still have a sixty percent failure rate.
Yeah.
So more kids fail than pass in these courses. Where's the dual credit versus who passes and who doesn't? I mean.
Our pass rate would be much higher in dual credit. Much higher. Um, now.
I just, I just find it hard to believe that we offer something that between sixty and eighty percent of the kids are gonna fail these courses.
They're not failing the courses, they're just not earning the college credit.
But they don't get college credit.
They're failing to get the benefit.
Right, right.
They can, they can get an A in the class, and they can fail the college test at the end, and then they don't get their college credit. So we have between sixty and eighty-seven percent of the kids that take this are failing the test at the end where they would would obtain their college credit.
Correct, in these cor, yes, definitely in IB.
And we're promoting it to parents.
This is the the way I approach it, and I think it's important to approach it across the spectrum. It, and we're gonna have to do a better job of educating our parents. Because it is important to know, and I look at it as a menu approach, what your outcome, what your goal is for your child. Because if I'm looking at my child, for example, there are some IB courses where I think he needs that level of rigor. Well, he's gonna get credit or not. He needs some AP opportunities that are gonna take him deeper. And the tracked universities that he's currently looking at, offer good opportunities for credit. And then there are absolutely dual credit courses that he's gonna take that makes sense within that, but it has to be that type of menu approach. Um, and that is difficult to do. It's difficult to discern as a parent, and it's something we're gonna have to continue to educate. But all three components are factors and pieces of a high-quality educational system.
And there, we we need to remember too also that the kids taking these more rigorous courses, even if they can't quite get to the assessment mark at the end of that course, they are more prepared for the college-level work that they're gonna see later than if they hadn't taken the course. So.
But will they get in college?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, this is not.
They're just not getting the college credit.
They're just not getting the credit now.
This is not limiting their access to college.
No.
In fact, I think they would do better on ACT-type entrance exam by having this more rigorous curriculum.
But, I mean.
I was gonna ask, is it, is it because of the rigorous part of the test, which one is more rigorous, the dual credit or the AP, or are they the same?
Which one's more rigorous, you said?
Could be course-specific.
Honestly, it, I could not say that for sure. Um, AP courses are pretty rigorous. Dual credit, it kind of depends on which university you're associated with. They're all very different expectations.
Typically, I would say AP is probably a little more rigorous.
And aren't we, we're making an assumption here. We're, we're assuming that the students are getting the rigor, but in in AP, but are they? I mean, the test results would say they're not. If they're getting an A or a B in the class and then getting a two or a three, are they, are we really giving them rigor?
Right.
There was a comment made earlier that I wanna kind of revisit, and that is the the motivation piece. There are kids that are taking these assessments to get weighted credit.
Exactly.
Not to get college credit. So they're, they're.
And what, what do you mean by that? Explain that to me.
All right, so I have a student, I I can tell you right now.
I mean, I think I know, but I just wanna hear.
I have a student who's a junior and is eleventh grade, and you mentioned earlier that in eleventh grade, we kind of see, um, he is taking three AP classes right now. In part to um, challenge himself, but it's also because he knows if he gets the grades in that, then the weighted component, the weightedness of those classes will make his GPA better at the end of the year. You know what I'm saying?
No matter what he scores.
No matter what he scores.
But you have to take the test.
Yes.
But that's not.
Which ends up hurting our.
So.
So you can take it and get the A or the B and get the weighted credit, but then not taking the test.
So you're saying some kids are taking it to get a B or a C, because it'll give them a A or a B?
But you can do the same thing with dual credit. You're gonna get a weighted.
Well, dual credit's gonna, your GPA is going to, um, what what we're saying is, the assessment component is the unique part of AP.
They, the assessment may may not be reflecting what they actually learned because of the effort they put in on that particular day.
Their score doesn't impact their weighted credit, nor does it impact their grade in the class.
I understand that, but when you sitting there and you're looking at, you know, setting up your classes for the next year, and you say, listen, should I do dual credit?
Yeah.
Or should I do AP? I mean, you're looking, you're, you're, the benefits are, you're gonna get weighted on your GPA on both classes.
Correct.
And I'm looking for that college credit, so I don't have to take this class in college when I get there if this transfers to the college. The thing is, you got sixty to eighty percent of the kids not getting that college credit with the AP.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's ridiculous.
And only twelve percent of them evidently care about the test.
Not necessarily.
No, I don't think that's completely true. I know several years ago, before they made the change to you have to take the test to get the weight, one of the reasons they did that is because a vast amount of kids weren't taking the AP test.
They just decided not to.
They just wanted the AP experience. So the thought process was, if we had them take the test to get the weight, we, they could get more scores and teachers could get a better feel for what really is going well and going not so well. The unintended consequence is that we have kids who should not be sitting for that test, based on their scores. And we do have kids who go into that testing room and we know, do not put forth the effort, because they're just walked in for the weighted credit.
And as a parent who's had, you know, I've had one that's now gone through the college system, um, what you said earlier. It was, we've, we've researched, it's, it was more advantageous to to try and get the AP score than to get a class that you really didn't need. You know, Emma, my daughter took two, she ended up taking two or three dual credit classes that, when she went to college, only applied to one. They all, they all satisfied the same requirement.
Right, it didn't count for her.
So, um, so she's passed that on, you know, and we've learned from that. So um, i- it's very depending on where you wanna go and how um, how you wanna approach it, I guess. I I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Billy, but uh.
No, see, I had just the opposite. I had one graduate with twenty-one credit hours that all transferred.
Right, so it just depends on, right.
Depends where you go to school, what program, if you're an engineer, half of these are not going to count anyways. They're gonna make you take them over again, so.
To revisit the field trip to go visit with the principal. Um, kinda like the NWA, or not NWA, map testing, we can kind of gauge ourselves a- across the state. Are we able to look at AP results from other schools? Or do we have to ask them, would you share those results with us to see how other schools are doing? And are they doing just as poorly as what this graph shows that we're doing?
Right, right.
A school by school, if we wanted a specific school, we would need to ask to share, um, because the, that's not um, published like some of our other state data is.
Sure.
Um, so uh, then the reason that I reached out to this particular school is because uh, they are having some success. They're not anywhere where they wanna be either, but they are having some success. And the principal has definitely had some direct experiences with College Board that we really feel like we can, we can benefit from and and leverage. Um, he also has, he feels like some pretty strong AP teams at this point. Again, they're not where they wanna be, but they're, they're growing. Um, and so that, he he was, he and his school were picked for a very specific reason.
Can we get US averages though, I think was the question for any of these?
US averages.
US averages.
I'm just, I'm, I've, I've got last year's pulled up, and we had fifty kids get fours and fives. And if you've got threes, fours, and fives, we had a hundred and ninety out of four hundred and thirty-two tests taken. So, I mean, it looks like it's consistent. I mean, we only have the two years, but it kinda looks consistent.
Oh, no, we agree. These are definitely the things that Dr. Barr listed, very similar to the conversation we have with math. Um, last year, we are just gonna use this as our impetus to to do better.
Along the same.
I'm sorry.
Along the same lines, um, could we also get numbers, uh, if you're saying that this is just that they, a a significant percentage is the test-taking, that they just don't do it or don't apply themselves? They have to apply themselves themselves theoretically for the regular test, right? Could we get the grade distribution, the same exact chart, but the real grades, so to speak?
Well, I think the real grades are gonna be considered higher.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying. Could, could we?
But I think we have a rigor, to your point, and you brought it up, both of you actually, I think we actually have a rigor question to be answered. And we are seeing, cause I'm looking at grade distributions, as you brought up, I'm already looking at those. And seeing that our students are scoring, doing well in those courses, well, that's not translating. That's why we wanna get them in actually scoring the AP test.
And do we want?
Because we, we've gotta change the rigor level.
And I don't know the answer to this question. Do, you said we changed that they have to take the test to get the weighted. Is there a purpose to that? I mean, isn't that what causing the angst here, is that kids are taking it that don't have their heart into taking it?
Some of the issues, certainly not.
So what, what is the benefit to making them take a test that they're just gonna tank?
So the original change, my understanding is, is that because we didn't have a lot of kids writing AP tests. And so the tests weren't.
What does that mean?
Teachers weren't taking it, sitting for it. And so the teachers weren't really getting a lot of feedback on how they were doing, because their, their numbers were so low. So the thought process.
But why do they need feedback?
In order to improve the curriculum and and make adjustments.
They didn't know how the kids were doing on the test, because they weren't taking the test.
But they were giving them other tests?
Yeah, in their own course.
They just, they weren't taking the college.
They don't know how they're doing from the college.
From the AP bar, from the, yeah, College Board bar. How do we measure up that? We know how we're doing locally, but how do we measure up? So the weightedness was changed. Um, and again, some of, some of the consequence is, is what we're seeing. Not all. Some of it is a rigor issue.
Yes.
Um, we are also in talks about reconsidering that, um, because you don't have to do anything special in dual credit to get weighted credit. You just have to be in class. So is that really equitable in AP? Should you just get weighted credit for it?
And if, if you, if the sole requirement is you just have to show up and write your name on the paper, right? I mean, if it doesn't matter what you get, you still get the weighted credit, then what's the point? I really don't see it.
We've had that same conversation. There's a lot to work on this area.
And it's just causing us to have to have this conversation, right? It just skews all, it skews all the results. We can't, it doesn't help the teacher measure anything anyway. So it's not answering that question to help them, because they don't know if it's just because they chose not to answer it.
I don't know anybody over at the high school who isn't open to changing the weighted comfort. That, that's a.
Another question to all of this too, is are we duplicating systems? If we've got English Language and Composition in AP, if we've got it in dual credit, and then we've got it in IB, do we really need it in three different versions?
Because there's three different tests that they have to pass, so we probably do unfortunately, right? Cause there's the IB test, there's the AP test, and there's the other test.
To, um, your point, it really is student-specific. It it is advantageous to have all three, so students and their families can sit down and chart the course that makes the most sense for their educational path. So for your child, the, taking this as AP makes more sense than taking as dual credit, based on the university that you are most interested in attending. It really is that specific. So I think having all those options for our parents as a well-rounded school system is advantageous. Now, does it lead to some headache and a lot more professional development? Probably. But is it probably in the long run, good for parents that they have all those options? Yes.
I would also say, for instance, when we were talking about how AP is, is probably more rigorous than most dual credit. IB is more rigorous than all of them, hence there, it's weighted differently. And so some kids might not be ready to do an IB course, but they might be ready to do an AP or a dual credit course.
But I still don't think you're seeing sixty to eighty percent failure rate in IB classes, are you?
No, 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 we are not. But also IB has had a much better structure in their mandated training.
More professional development.
They just have a better structure. AP is more, do whatever you want. And so we're going to have to internalize some structures and see if that makes a difference.
Well, we also don't know what these percentages look like overall, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I mean, I would guess the median would be three. Um, so are we really that much worse? I don't, you know, I I don't know with just looking at these numbers.
Yeah, we, we've got to know to get some more comparison data. That will, that'll help that assessment.
And then probably my last comment. Um, I don't understand, the, the weighted average thing isn't making logical sense in my head. Cause let's say I'm a B student, and I know I'm a B student. I could take a regular class and know that I'm gonna get a B. Theoretically, I could take this harder class. So I'm signing up to take a harder class.
Mm-hmm.
To get a B. So I either have to get a C. Logically, I would get a C in the harder class.
Yes.
And then get a B credit for it.
Correct.
Why would I do that? So the only reason I would sign up for a harder class is if I knew it wasn't really harder.
Or that you're gonna get a college credit at the end, where you won't have to take that class in college.
Well, they're saying some do it just for weighted credit.
Yes.
Yeah.
So to me, that means the class isn't really harder. Otherwise, I would just get my B in the regular class.
I think almost every student comes at this with a different lo- motivation and intent. And so that's one of the advantages.
So I come back to questioning rigor, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's an advantage and a challenge at the same time, that we have a large comprehensive high school that can offer all these choices. So um, that, I I think it's a great thing for to have the options, but with that comes the responsibility to make sure we've got a good uh, rigor and implementation for all these.
Correct.
Um, appropriate professional development support, uh, all those things that go along with it, if we're gonna continue to have this wide range. And the, we've, we've got a specific target about increasing the whole parent education side of this to help parents, help kids make good decisions, so.
The last piece of information that would be good would be to look at how many were in that sixty percent category before we did the weighted av- gave them the weighted credit versus now. And if that number has doubled or tripled or quadrupled, that will tell you something.
Correct, yeah, that's a good point. Okay, I think we have work keys.
On to work keys. So work keys is something that we started just a couple of years ago. Um, the big impetus started last year when Cass County was applying to be a certified work-ready community. So you have to have so many kids that get, um, have to take the work keys test in order to be considered a certified uh, work-ready community. And you have to have so many businesses sign on and say, we're going to, it doesn't guarantee a job at all, but we're going to maybe give a little more leverage as far as giving an interview to a student who maybe has a a gold work key certificate, as opposed to somebody who does, who has nothing. So there's kind of an agreement from the business and then, then from the the schools. Uh, work keys is developed by ACT. Uh, it is more their um, career readiness side of it, as opposed to the uh, regular ACT academic testing that we're familiar with. It does um, have for you to get the certificate, and has three specific tests that a student has to take. Applied mathematics, workplace documents, and graphic literacy. And they are very much, all these questions set in the workplace. So for instance, um, one of the workplace document questions, they will give you like a policy. It reads kind of like our school board policy, and it'll have the kid read the policy, and then you have to ask question, answer questions about it, or.
I'm sure kids love that.
Or, or applied math. Uh, one of the questions I saw was, as an employee, this is your employee discount, and then you are getting a, a shirt off the rack that's already twenty percent off, factoring that in your employee discount, what's it going to cost? So it's, it's questions like that, that they really do have to apply their knowledge, um, instead of just have rote memorization. So uh, kids can get uh, several types of scores. There's zero, which means they've got nothing. And then there's three, four, five, six, and seven. So there's a bit of a, a bit of a, a jump that we're, we're looking at. So there's a bit of a, a bit of a, a jump that we're, we're looking at. Our juniors, um, have this option on super test day, uh, in order to take that. Last year, because we were really focused on that Cass County number that we needed to get up to. We did have, um, a hundred and thirty-nine kids test. Um, this year, or last year, I'm sorry, in eighteen nineteen, we had a lot more conversations with students about right test, right time. We tested seventy-seven, um, students. In regards to certificates, um, platinum, which is the top, which means I, you scored well in, um, all three of those areas. Our platinum rate, uh, increased by almost three percent. Our gold rate, which is the next one, increased by eight point two. Our silver reduced to sixteen percent and our bronze reduced by seven point four. But that's good because, it's because we moved them up to the, to the gold and the, the platinum levels. Which is kind of what you're always, um, looking for in, in this particular test. Um, the first graphic that you can see shows kind of how our kids did in each of those three tests. So you can see the, the number of kids who scored a zero or three through, through seven, um, on each of those areas. And then, um, the bottom graph, uh, shows the certificates. And again, you can see the platinum, gold, silver, bronze, or no certificate. Um, because a student has to, like I said, earn a qualifying score in all three tests in order to, to get a certificate at all. Overall, um, we did make some pretty big gains in graphic literacy and workplace documents. Um, we do still have some work on applied math.
How are we making those gains? I mean, is it, there's not a class for this?
No, no. So, um, uh, the reason I believe we made some gains in workplace documents and graphic literacy is that our English three and English four teachers have really kind of jumped in. And it's easier for them to do that because unlike math where you can be in any grade level and be in any math course. Juniors are typically in, in a junior English, seniors are in a senior English. They've really, um, been focusing on, uh, implementing more of the questions that are more real world. And implementing more nonfiction reading, things like that. So it's not a surprise that we've made some gains in graphic literacy and workplace documents because that's where we've focused. Our challenge in math is, is kind of re-looking at, um, where, where are those kids who are taking the work keys? What math classes are they falling in? And then what can we fold in, um, to those courses? Just to give the students more practice. Because sometimes it's just that they haven't seen it, seen questions like that, um, on a regular basis. And so they, they need more of that exposure, particularly like on workplace documents. Kids are not usually just reading policy, um, just for fun. And so they need that practice.
And keep in mind, the overall goal here is for kids to, to walk out of the high school with something beyond their diploma. And for some of our students, this is, this is the one that makes the most sense for them. They, they have a, a type of job they're going to go look for right away. And the certificate shows, shows that they're ready for certain types of jobs, so.
And we do try to focus on juniors because that way we still have the rest of the junior year and the senior year to make adjustments. Any questions on work keys?
Are we getting more businesses signed up that are accepting them?
I should have an update on that tomorrow. I go to a Cass County workforce meeting tomorrow and they usually give us some updates.
Okay, I think we're going to transition if we're ready.
Launch update.
Okay, so Launch, um, was a program that we, uh, adopted la- last year. Um, after some legislation came out saying online, online coursework is something that we're all going to need to offer. So Launch is through the Springfield School District. Um, it is taught by, um, teachers in Missouri and it is all aligned to Missouri standards. So we feel pretty confident that, um, it at least is aligned to our state expectations. Second semester of last year was the first time that students could, uh, enroll in, in Launch. And so for second semester, we had a total of forty-nine students enrolled. And you can kind of see the breakdown of, of where they went. Obviously mostly high school kids. We had a sprinkling of middle school. Uh, for, um, those forty-nine kids, twenty of them had drops or fails. So they either failed the course or they dropped the course before completing it. Uh, the middle school had three, um, students who had drops or fails. As far as looking at total coursework, those forty-nine students were enrolled in a total of a hundred and fourteen courses. Um, and in those courses, forty-eight of the hundred and fourteen were drops or fails at the high school level. Six were drops or fails at the middle school. So in doing a little further analysis, uh, because we really want to kind of get closer to a, what's a profile of a successful online student. We did some additional, uh, analysis. So the average GPA of a student who dropped or failed a course prior to them taking Launch was a one point five for second semester. The average GPA of a student who earned an A or a B was a three point one one. So a definite difference between those, those two sets of students. The average GPA of a student who passed a standard online course, so a standard online course is this is the first time I'm ever taking this course. Uh, that's a two point eight one of that particular group of kids. And the average GPA of a student who passed a credit recovery course is a two point one five. So a credit recovery means I've already failed it in some capacity and so now I'm taking it again. Um, the trend for second semester of last year was definitely credit recovery. We did have some seniors who wanted part-time schedule, you know, it's not really a part-time schedule because they had, but they wanted to maybe come in school a little later. And so they, they did their online in the afternoon. Um, we also had some families that maybe school, they thought maybe face-to-face school wasn't their thing and we're going to try this different option. Um, our total cost last year was a little over, it was almost twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, for kids who do, um, pass the course, or even kids who get to a certain point, we do receive ADA money back. So that's not strictly out of pocket. There's money coming back in. Summer presented a very different, um, kind of set, set of information. So we had two hundred and sixty-eight students enrolled in a total of four hundred and fifteen classes. It was very popular this summer. Of the two hundred and sixty-eight students, we only had forty-four students who had drops or fails at the high school level. And then incoming ninth graders, we only had five drops or fails. Um, you'll see in the coursework as well, a very different, um, profile. Four hundred and fifteen courses, sixty-nine drops or fails, and of the incoming ninth grade, seven drops or fails.
We saw much greater success in the summer.
Very good.
I will tell you, the profile of the student is different as, as well. And we'll talk about like what classes that were enrolled in in just a few minutes. So the average GPA of a student who dropped or failed a course in the summer was a one point eight one. Uh, a student who got an A or a B was a three point two one. The standard online, um, GPA course, uh, was a three point one one. And then, um, ki- kids who passed a credit recovery course was a one point eight three. So slightly different, although trending still the same. Um, there was a big trend this summer in what kids took. They took PE, they took personal finance, and they took health. And so we did have a lot of incoming ninth graders who wanted to, um, kind of get that, um, off, off their table. So that they can make room in the regular school year for other things. We also had, uh, a bit of an interest, it was a, it was a far fourth, but driver's ed was our fourth most interested, um, course with nineteen enrollments. Um, health had fifty-nine, finance seventy-two, PE had seventy-nine. So, there was definitely a different trend there. Um, we are also seeing a different trend this fall than we did in, in the second semester of the spring. So seventy-eight students, still vastly high school, a few middle school, a hundred and eighty-two courses. What we are seeing in this enrollment is, is less credit recovery, um, more enrichment or more kids trying to get graduation requirements. So we are still seeing those seniors who, I'm doing Launch first and second hour, you know, just so I can come to school third hour. But maybe I'm doing the coursework in the afternoon. I'm coming into school a little later. Um, our primary courses of interest are, um, fine arts. We have a lot, that is our most popular one, um, this, uh, this fall. English four, government, personal finance, and, and English three. So, um, whereas in the se- second semester of last year, we had a lot more credit recovery, this is more enrichment. We've got kids in Japanese, German, AP physics. So we also are having kids begin to access courses that we don't offer and they want to, to give it a try. Which is a, a big benefit of Launch, that they do have some courses that we don't offer that they can, they can attempt.
And what happens when they drop or fail a course?
What happens?
Depends when. If they drop before the drop date, we enroll them in another course and, um, you know, on-campus course hopefully. And get them the credit that semester. Now, if they stay in the course and fail it, it's just like failing a course on campus. Impacts your overall GPA and you have to earn that credit another way.
Launch does offer something called dropout detective, and that is for families and for schools. And so like I can see, and our counselors can see every kid who's enrolled and they kind of do it like a thermometer. And so if you're in the red, you're in trouble. If you're in yellow, you're, you're, you know, maybe have a few missing assignments. If you're in green, you're in really good shape. Launch also sends us regular emails about, um, inactivity. Um, that's new this year. So if a kid hasn't been active for five days, they shoot us an email. And then I send it down to the counselors, go find that child, figure out what's going on, um, and where we're at. So, Launch is truly, um, very strong in their communication.
And so all that same information is going to the parents as well?
Parents have the dropout detective for sure that they can check on. They can check on the kids' grades at any time. So they have total access to see how their students are doing. I don't know if they receive an inactivity email, but they do have the ability to log in on their own at any time and see what they're doing.
You do get emails.
You do get emails, okay.
I remember my little tip one this summer and they started with a phone call to the parents from the teacher to start the summer, kick it off. Uh, informed you about the process and the things that were going. I thought it was fairly well done.
Some, and it did, it just depends on the teacher. Because some of them are very thorough about this is the process, others kind of expect you-
To know it.
To know?
Yeah.
Kinda. Um, so I, I, I wish they would all just kind of be pretty thorough at the very beginning on how the process. Because it is new to RAPAC, it is new to the students. Um, one thing I didn't know, and I'd kind of just heard through the, the rumor mill is, um, seniors, yeah, they'll take like, uh, a launch first and second hour so they can come in late. But other students that have it built into their schedule, I, I guess we're offering, or the high school's offering like a launch classroom. So they can go through their other classes throughout the day. And then you can have all sorts of different kids with different launch classes. But they can all go to the launch classroom or maybe there's more than one. I don't know, but that's just what I have been told. And then, you know, what, after that block's over, that hour's over, they go back to their other classes.
So, that's by design. We did not want somebody to, we did not want Crystal to arrange her schedule, so she had a two-hour lunch block. So she could leave and come back. Maybe she would do that. So, um, if, if it does land in the middle of the day, um, yes, we purposely do that. Also, we thought that the success rate's going to be better. If they're here, they're more likely, because we can provide that discipline of time. Sometimes discipline of time when you're sitting at home is a little, is a little rougher. So that, that is by design, to be able to do it that way.
Crystal mentioned, we're kind of getting a better understanding of the profile of the students will be successful. And what it tells us so far, at least what it tells me, is that they're comparable rigor and difficulty of a course that's a seated course with us. Students who do well on campus do well online. Students who struggle on campus tend to struggle online. There are going to be exceptions to that general trend, obviously, uh, that we would need to look for. But there is no, uh, perception out there, I don't believe, that it's an easier way to get credit, which is important.
I haven't heard that.
It's, it's the real thing. For an easy way to get credit are going to be brutally awakening.
Yeah, they don't, they don't take very many.
And you're going to be expected to perform.
That's what we saw for second semester of last year, is that assumption of, oh, it's going to be easy. And so that's why I think it's trended different in the fall, because word is out that, hey, it's, it's not easy.
Yep, you're going to be held accountable. Um, I just had one question about it. I'm assuming, since it's through the Springfield School District, when kids sign up, they're just kind of thrown into this class, this class, this teacher, this teacher. Because there's several teachers, um, like, I've talked to three or four that have chemistry and they all have a different teacher. Um, would it be beneficial to have our kids have the same teacher? That way they can collaborate and, um, and, and, and kind of bounce ideas off to each other? Or, or not? I, I don't know, that's-
I think that's, it would be an interesting conversation to have with Launch and with our leadership team. Because I, I had not-
Launch is now popular enough across the state that we actually have our own Kansas City rep who is just up north, has an office up north. That's fairly new, so we can definitely reach out to her. And that's been very nice to have our own person, instead of just asking random Launch email person. Um, she's been very responsive. Um, so, yeah, I think we can definitely make that suggestion.
By the way, they're up to now, over forty percent of the school districts in the state are being served through Launch. Which, I mean, I think we picked the right partner, because the, the quality's there, uh, the cost is, uh, m- least cost of all the online options that are out there that we, that we're aware of.
They've been a good partner so far. They really have.
Do we know if any of our teachers reached out to teach?
I know one that was interested because I sent Launch, I sent Launch an email, just telling them that, and they said, great, thank you. We'll make sure this teacher's in the pipeline. It would be a good teacher for that. So I went ahead and made that recommendation, but I do not know if they've been selected yet. That was pretty recently, so I don't know.
Um, of the seventy-eight students enrolled in the fall, do we know how many of those are full-time Launch versus just picking up a class here or there?
That's a great question. I don't think we have.
They're averaging about two and a half courses of P, so-
We don't have many full-time Launch. Yeah. I think that number's pretty small, but we can look that up.
It is. The vast majority are just taking a sprinkling here or a sprinkling there. It's super rare to have a full-time. We have a few. Um, for instance, I know one of our middle school kids, uh, is into rodeoing. And, and so they do a little more classes online, uh, because the, just the rodeo schedule doesn't really make it conducive. Her, she always had over ten days of absences and so we do have a few of those kind of situations. Where because they're involved in gymnastics, skating, rodeo, that this is actually a better way for them to receive their education and still get to possibly compete in Olympics.
And it's nice that they can work at their pace. Uh, um, the teachers open it up to where you can, um, you can move ahead in one course as far as you want. And then the other, that leaves you more time to work on other courses that you struggle with. So, it, it's nice that they just open it up and it's not a, a day-by-day type thing, so.
It's also on the Canvas platform, which as more and more of our high school teachers are utilizing Canvas themselves, it's a platform kids are familiar with. So it's not like they're trying to learn Schoology here and Canvas here. It's kind of nice, um, for our kids to be able to use that one platform, face-to-face or online.
And as this is becoming much more common in the college ranks, having our kids have exposure to at least one is probably a pretty good idea. Um, because they're going to see college courses and then in the, in the workforce, workforce professional development's going online. So, uh, I think it's really a good skill for our kids to have.
Any additional questions?
Thanks guys, it was a lot of information.
No, I know, we've probably overloaded you, so we're sorry.
All right, MSBA conference report.
I'd share a few comments. Generally, I appreciate the board members who were able to attend. We always have good representation at the MSBA Fall Conference. We had five board members there. And, uh, thanks to those that helped present as well. So that, that was a good representation, had good turnout to the sessions that we presented at. The downside of that is you don't get to attend as many breakout sessions because you're involved in your own that you're, you're preparing for and presenting. Um, but overall, I thought it was a good conference. Uh, congratulations to Ruth for being recognized for the advocacy award for the state. And we'll recognize her again next Thursday night. Um, and, you know, as you go through the different presentations, some of them, they provided those, uh, breakout, uh, presentations through the app that we could actually download. About half did, about half did not. So, if there was anything of note, of interest in there that you saw, that you'd like to learn more about, I've already downloaded quite a few of those. Um, and we could share those out as needed. A couple I'm going to mention, uh, would be, one, I went to a Springfield presentation talking about their building level scorecards. You know, we have our district level scorecard and they're, they're, they've started now, just recently, creating building level scorecards. And they do one that's academics and one that's climate and culture that gets into some of the other soft, uh, s- soft side of school, if you will. Social emotional side of school, including things like attendance and discipline. Thought that was interesting, shared that with Dr. Volker. Um, might be something we could think about moving forward. Another one that I attended was the, uh, Park Hill presented on their, uh, Lead High School concept. Which is a more of a project-based capstone-type high school setting. They're actually building a new facility right now to house that in the future. I'm looking forward to going and looking at that because maybe that's an option for us to think about, um, as we continue to develop our, um, our, our growth needs for space in the future. So, uh, that was interesting to see. I, I didn't realize that they had this going on currently already. I thought it was a program that was going to be started in the new building, but it's already ongoing to where their kids are spending more time working on projects and less time in traditional classes like English and science and math. It's much more integrated, uh, for some of their upper-level kids, so.
Yep.
Uh, I thought that was an interesting presentation, but I don't know.
Dr. Volker got inundated because I brought him. I went to a-
I got a packet, that's-
A presentation from Independence and they've got a lot of academies. Um, and it was just interesting to hear their viewpoint. Yeah, they've got some interesting dynamics over there with the city square. So they're able to utilize a lot of that for their, their real world learning and hands-on learning. Um, a piece I brought back to him that kind of stuck with me was, as they've gotten further into this process, um, reevaluating their classes they offer. You know, if it doesn't fit in with the strand that they've got going, they get rid of it. Because it not only frees up teachers and, and office space, but it just kind of streamlines stuff. So that was an interesting perspective going forward with some of the stuff we're thinking about doing. And how they, as a freshman and even as an eighth grader, really try to get that education piece going for the students and the parents.
Yeah, I like the middle school component or the starting early with the parent education. Maybe that's the way, uh, I would phrase it. I like that.
And Ashley was actually in that one too, and she asked some good questions about the special needs students going through that process and how you- And how, you know, they really work to integrate the special needs as much as possible.
Well, thanks again for your engagement, very appreciative, and we'll share more of that as we, as we can.
All right, if there's nothing else, thank you guys for all your hard work. It was a lot of information tonight. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.